Okay, I'd like to thank the council for this opportunity to share the state of the city. I'd like to thank Miles and Jared and Matt from Medina TV, they always help with the slides and we're going to have some video in this one and they do a great job with it. So, the title for this year is "What Makes Medina Best Hometown," after we were selected by Ohio Magazine, and that's going to be the theme throughout. And when I talk about the city, or what the city does, or how we process things, that's all of us. I don't want council to think, you know, that's the administration's doing this or that, because we're all in this together. So, we'll go from there. So, the first thing that makes a best hometown is collaborating and partnering with others, and I have a number of those. It's not all-inclusive, but obviously, we do a great deal with the Chamber, with Main Street. We have three different schools we deal with: Medina City Schools, Buckeye Schools, and the Career Center. We're collaborating and working more and more with the county and the townships, surrounding townships. ODOT, we partnered on a number of projects and continue to. Fraternal organizations like the Rotary and the Kiwanis, churches, the Medina Community A best hometown works with our healthcare partners to provide excellent healthcare in our community, and the other big advantage is the employment opportunities that this offers. And we have four major healthcare providers here in the city, including Metro Health, SUMA, university hospitals, and of course Medina Hospital, Cleveland Clinic Hospital. And the Healthy Medina Program was offered to city staff by Medina Hospital, and as the council is well aware, or for the public that may be watching, and I can tell you, this is pretty unusual. No other city has experienced what we have in healthcare premiums. So, in 2017, we did not have an increase in our healthcare premium. They kept it at the 2016 rate. In 2018, we, there was competition between a couple healthcare providers, and Medical Mutual gave us the lowest, at 7.8% reduction going from, into '18, and then this current year, 4.5% reduction. So, that's a total of a little over 12% reductions, again, on the 2016 rates, which is highly unusual.
The purpose of hospitals these days is not only to help people get well, it's also to help our community stay healthy. We have been partnering with the city of Medina for the last few years on something called Healthy Medina. We work with employees of the city of Medina to help improve their health through education and stopping bad habits and losing weight, eating smarter, all those types of things. And when we can document those health improvements, then we can take that to an insurance company and show that our citizens are getting healthier. That in turn can lead to lower, or at least stable, or lower insurance rates for those participants. So, we're very grateful for the city of Medina's participation, but I think it's been beneficial to both of us. Just for reference, in 2019, our participants in the Healthy Medina have lost over 500 pounds in total. Nearly one in five of our participants has had an improvement in blood pressure to the normal range, and over 50% of participants have had an improvement in their overall health risk score.
Appreciate the doctor giving us that information. So, the next thing is a best hometown has strong commercial and industrial economic development efforts. And the city of Medina, we had a great year in 2017 at $116 million, but we beat that in 2018 with $154 million. And we do business and retention expansion visits along with the Chamber and Medina County Economic Development Committee. We created 318 new jobs in 2018, which was coupled with the 489 jobs we created in 2017. And more of the problem that we're seeing right now is just finding workers to fill these positions. We have a number of vacancies in our industrial, in our service, in our food service operations, and there's really more of a worker shortage than there is creating enough jobs for folks. The city partners on our ribbon-cutting days, the city partners with the Chamber and Main Street Medina to host our ribbon cuttings. We invite the county officials, the state legislators, other elected state offices, and even our federal legislators, either personally or one of their liaisons will attend. And the display case that has made in Medina County now, directly behind the council, we also permit businesses to come in. Root Candle has had things there, Rico Products has had things there, Fire Dex has had things there. And again, it's just another benefit for the public to know what's going on in their community. And I want to assure the council and the public that not only do we take care of the new businesses, but we have tenured long-term companies here as well. And council may recall that just a few weeks ago, Root Candles were recognized for their 150 years in business in the city of Medina, and Drug Mart was here a few months ago, here at a council meeting, for 50 years in business.
You know, for us, I mean, it's a no-brainer, I think, for any business or any company looking to choose Medina, from my perspective, it's a home run. If they're really looking for a quality of life for themselves, or for their employees choosing this community, I don't think it gets any better, probably, in the state of Ohio, or even in the United States of America, really.
I agree.
As a sense of community. So, you know, for us, you know, we made a $30 million-plus investment into this community. So, we do not take that lightly at all, because that's a lot of money to risk. And if we fail, we fail in a major way. And so, driving our stakes in deep here came with a lot of thoughts, a lot of hard work, to make sure we were making the right decision, because it's our life and it's a lot of people, a lot of people's lives too, that are trusting us for their success and for their well-being.
Appreciate Jeff sharing his involvement with the city. So, a best hometown also has a friendly and a welcoming building department. Dan Gladish is the chief building official, has done a great job of organizing the service orientation. We cross-train the employees, not only in the building department, but with planning and zoning and economic development. That's one of the advantages of having all three of them in the community development department. We get a 15,000 community development block grant that helps with our code enforcement efforts. If we didn't get that, then that would be city dollars that had to be used for that. And in 2018, the David A. Smith Award for Building Department Excellence was presented to the city of Medina on March 4th, 2019. And not only the building department, but Dan will be quick to tell you that it's not just his department, it's really the whole community development department model and support. But what's important about this award is that we applied to get it, and what they did to analyze whether, who was going to get it, was they talked to homeowners, they talked to contractors, they talked to people that were actually here being serviced from the city, not data that we provided, but data that they found through their own research. And the city of Medina's building department was able to outrank all the other ones in the state that applied for the same grant, or, I'm sorry, the same award.
I fell in love with the town and the square, and began looking around for property on the square, which I, for some reason, wanted to own and manage. I got the property, and then I hired an architect, and when I hired him, I wanted him to go out and sit in the square in Medina for two days, and look around, and look around, and look around. And at the end of the two days, I told him, that's what I want, in the building. So, we did, he did, we did, and we got the initial drawings together, and I liked what he proposed, and he actually liked a couple of my ideas as well. From the date of onset, when I had my first idea, to finishing up, it was a four-year project, and I didn't, up till that point, realize I had the kind of stick-to-it-ness to pull it off, but we did, and it did. And I want to give a heads-up also to Dan Gladish, our Medina's building inspector. He has been nothing but helpful, with just some innovative things to do, some things to watch out for in construction, and a very, very informative man. And I, Dan, I'm going to say this directly to you, I appreciate everything you did for us. Thank you so much.
We appreciate Dr. Raymond's investment. The other thing a best hometown does is try to support, so we're using less local money and more grant money. So, we have a community development block grant, where we get $150,000 over two years. And then we also have a program, Year 2018 Community Housing Impact and Preservation Grant, that we share with Brunswick. And the importance of this, again, back to collaboration, this was a push by the state of Ohio, that you would get less money if you didn't collaborate, and more money if you did. The advantage from the taxpayer is that by having the city of Medina be the administrator of the grant, we're paying for one administrator, so more and more of the funds can be used for the actual programming, and more houses improved, and more grants awarded, and less time for the administration of the grant. A best hometown also provides a variety of amenities for their residents. In our case, we have vast parklands and sports fields, we have two splash pads, we have an outdoor swimming pool, that's a little bit unusual, because most swimming pools in a community, if the weather gets bad, or the weather's cold that particular day, or turns cold during the day, then those folks with those passes have nowhere to go. In our case, when we had the rec center take over operating the outdoor swimming pool, we made it convenient for the folks to be able to go to the rec center for two purposes. One is we felt they should at least have the opportunity, if they expended those dollars, to have a place to swim, but also to expose them to the rec center and hopefully drive some more patrons that way. We have bike trails and multimodal paths. Our cemeteries are more like parks, and I want to give a mention to the Friends of the Cemetery, because of their investment, because of their collaboration with the city, that's why our cemetery, both the Spring Grove Cemetery and the older cemetery next to the county administration building, both look as good as they do because of the work of the Friends of the Cemetery. We have a senior snowplow program, a Love Medina, or a Community Service Day, that helps some of our seniors with some of their yard work, or painting that they can't do on their own. The council graciously permitted for the last two years to assist with senior citizen meals at $20,000 a year, and they give us a very good accounting of those dollars staying within the city, as well as being coupled with other money that the county is expending for that program. We have leaf and yard waste pickup at no charge, and our Medina Community Recreation Center with a field house, a track, functional training, the building that we're hoping to get started on yet this year, two indoor pools, meeting rooms, and then the Healthy Medina Program that Dr. was talking about earlier. We also have one for the community that's run out of the rec center, and the community has been very involved with that, and we've seen great results, just as we've seen in the city. A best hometown works well with the county. In our case, the county has maintained the city sewers for decades. The county and the city share equipment. If we have a piece of equipment, or they have a piece of equipment, and we need to help each other out and share it. The parking deck behind the Common Pleas Court was a past collaborative effort, and we're working now on a combined county municipal court project, and continuing to make progress in that regard, which again, will save taxpayers, both design-wise, construction-wise, and operationally-wise, for decades to come. A best hometown works cooperatively with our churches. My time as the police chief, and my 10 years now as mayor, I've assisted with the Martin Luther King Jr. Celebration. They have an annual celebration at Second Baptist of the Black History Month. We started a couple years ago with a four chaplain service that Dave Taylor, the commander of the American Legion, has put together, and they rotate that around different churches. The National Day of Prayer, we currently have breakfast, noon, and evening programs. We had the evening program for over two decades. I helped plan that as the police chief and as the mayor. And then when I took over as mayor, they said, well, you know, if somebody can't come to the evening service, it would be nice to have some other opportunities for them. So, that's how the breakfast was created, at 7:00 a.m., the noon service at St. Francis, and the evening service at 7:00 p.m. We also celebrate church and pastor anniversaries or retirements, and World Communion Day up on our square.
Hello, my name is Arthur Ruffin. I am the pastor of Second Baptist Church here in the city of Medina. We are located at 451 Bronson Street. I have been here three and a half years, and we are enjoying what we're doing here in our church, and in our community, and also in the county of Medina. One of our goals is to partner with different organizations, so that we all can become one, and not divisive. We enjoy working with our great mayor, who's a Christian man, Mayor Dennis Hanwell. There are so many other people that we have worked with. We've worked with some people in the law office, in the city department, that have helped enhance our community, enhanced our church building, inside and outside, that have just done a great deal in helping us and seeking things that we need, that we are not aware of. So, our main goal here is to not be divisive in the city, but to come together as a community and assist one another. We're excited about what different businesses and organizations are doing to show the city of Medina that we can come together, that we are a loving place. It's a great place to live. So, we're just excited about what's happening, what's taking place. We're looking forward to what's going to happen in the city. There are other future ideals and things that we have put together. So, we're just excited about what church and the community can do together. Medina is a great place to live.
Appreciate the pastor. So, a best hometown also provides superior safety forces. And again, before I get to the screen, we, it is very unusual how we do things here together. When we have a medic call in the city, it doesn't matter where it is, or what it's for, we send police, fire, and EMS. So, our duty crew rolls, our police officers go, and LST responds, if they're out and about, if not from their fixed location. And our police have been trained in AEDs by the hospital, by LST. We've also trained our police officers in trauma-bleeding control, in CPR, and just recently, well, a year ago now, last fall, we began providing those same policing services to Lafayette Township at their request. Our fire department, as the council knows, provides fire services to the city of Medina, Medina Township, and Montville Township, and we continue to research a fire district. The life support team provides basic and advanced life support to people in our city, in both townships of Medina and Montville. The city has a levy coming up here this fall, and we have outstanding service provided by the life support team, and I would just encourage our residents to support that levy to continue to find service that we have. And we have a video actually on our cable TV that talks about that levy, and what the cost was 20 years ago, to buy a certain piece of equipment, to buy an ambulance, to buy some of these things that are required each time we replace one of our ambulances. And to say the cost are astronomical would be an understatement, when you look at the comparison from 20 years ago to today. So, that is the reason that we need some increase in the funding to continue to maintain the high level of services. Now, because of our combined response, some of the AED saves that we've seen actually resulted in having the heart catheter inserted within 52 to 53 minutes of the 911 call. 52 to 53 minutes of the 911 call, the person's having the artery opened up. And it's such an unusual service, that the Cleveland Clinic main campus is asking now for copies of the officer's body cameras, to see exactly what we're doing, and study it as a best practice. But just to give you an example of how that works, and how you can attain 52 to 53 minutes, is if the officers get there and put their AED on the person, they do need to be shocked. When the LST arrives, their unit is the same exact unit as ours. So, they unplug the wire from our unit and plug it into their unit, give the officer two more pads, so in case the very next call, he goes to, he needs it again, we pray not, but he's ready to go. He doesn't have to go out to the hospital and get re-equipped. So, then what happens is as soon as LST has that plugged in, it sends that data electronically through cellular waves to the ER. The ER doctor reviews it immediately, and if it meets certain criteria, it's then transferred to the main campus for their cardiac folks to review. And if it meets certain criteria, they auto-launch a helicopter from the main campus to Medina Hospital. And there are times, because otherwise you wouldn't do it in 52 or 53 minutes, there are times the person goes right from the scene, to the ambulance, to the helicopter, to the cath lab. And when they get them up there, all of the doctors, the nurses, they go right from the helicopter landing, right into the operating room, and just that quickly, that person's artery is opened up, and people's lives are being saved as a result of that program. And I'm proud of our staff, day in and day out, working collaboratively to do that.
I was in the police department for a number of years before I retired, and the police department here has a program. You go on vacation, you call them, give them your information, they'll come out, they'll check your house for you when you're gone. I never had a use, I did use it, I should say, but I never expected to get a call from them. But here, not too long ago, I checked the house myself, I locked up all the doors and windows, went down to Cincinnati, and I wasn't down there maybe an hour, and they get a call. "Hi, Mr. Stark, see, this is the Medina Police Department." I says, "Oh, Lord." And I thought something very serious had happened, but they told me that we found the back door open. I never locked the back door in the office, I was checking, pulled on the door, and it opened. So, we made arrangements to have my daughter come out here and lock up the house, and talk about an embarrassment. I mean, gee whiz. But it could have been worse. If the officer hadn't checked the house, the door's unlocked, maybe somebody just come and walk through the yards, grabbing doorknobs. Could have got in the house, and who knows what. So, that's one of the services that you do have here, and it's fantastic. Take advantage of it.
So, a best hometown also updates and improves its infrastructure. That video that you're seeing there now, obviously, we all recognize as the North Court Project, which took 30 months. But in addition to that, in 2018, we spent almost $5 million overall on projects of roadways, trails, water lines, and almost 60% of it was grant dollars. The ODOT North Court Project spanned from Harding Highland in the city up to Fen Road in Medina Township. The total project cost $31 million, and 91% of it, 91% of it was grant dollars. The city upgraded the lighting, the traffic light mast arms, to fit with the historic nature of the city. And on the west side of the road, they, we paid for a wider multimodal path. You can see the sidewalk on the left, and the larger path on the right, which is asphalt. And it was such a good project, that ODOT actually received a statewide award, called the 2019 Don Conway Partnering Award. And it was because of the work of ODOT, DeJoyia Contracting, who was the contractor working for ODOT, Euthenix did the design, and the city. And what helped us win the award was, as they would run into snafus along there, you know, they'd find a water pipe that was not on the plans, they'd find a sewer line, or some piece of infrastructure. We would all either meet on scene, put the plans out on the hood of the truck, talk about how we were going to have to divert traffic, or what we're going to do to get beyond this conflict, or they would meet us here, if that was easier, because they had to see other plans or things that they didn't have on scene with them. And it was because of the quick resolve, and the willingness of the city to get together at any time, day or night, to resolve those issues, that they ended up winning that award. Well, I should say, we ended up winning that award, and we're proud of that. And then the other thing I'd like to mention is with our water service. We have digital read meters now, where the officers don't have to go day-to-day and up and down everybody's yard and look at the meter in the back. They can drive down the road and electronically reads them. But the other advantage of that is now we get high-read alerts in the finance department. So, the finance department can see, all of a sudden this month, this person's water is two to three times what it had been, and why is that? So, we either call, stop out, or email them, depends on the person and the contact information we have for them, and we ask them, you know, "Did you just plant a lawn? Did you put in a pool? Is there some reason that this water?" And sometimes there is, and sometimes there's not. Sometimes it's, they've got a leaky faucet, they've got a shut-off valve that's not totally shut off, and it's continuing to leak, maybe in an area that they don't use of the house that much. But again, being proactive as a city to alert them to that. Best hometown works well with our local schools. I mentioned earlier, we collaborate with Medina City Schools, Buckeye Schools, both of which have areas of our city, as well as the Medina County Career Center. There are times the city's ready to get rid of some computers, because they're on a rotation for the city, but one of the two schools may still be able to use them, because they're in better shape than some of the computers they still have. The Medina County Career Center, I serve on an advisory panel there, but we also have given them a police car and an old fire truck, that had we taken those computers, had we taken those vehicles to auction, we get pennies on the dollars. Whereas if we let them use them for the number of years that's beneficial to them, and they give them back to us, and then we put it in the auction, we're probably going to get the same thing anyway, because the auction numbers are so low. We share our office supply purchases with Medina City Schools, and because it's a higher volume by combining both entities, we both see a cost savings of that. As the council and the public may or may not know, we do not have a human resources department here. I do a little bit of it, civil service does a little bit, Mr. Huber does a little bit. And there are times where we have some unusual human resource needs that are a little bit more complex. And Councilman Shields is always very gracious with his time, in either reviewing what our plan is, reviewing letters that we've drafted, and giving us input on, from a human resources perspective. And Jim, we appreciate that a great deal. We share equipment and services with the schools. There are times, maybe they're going to wait till summer, and they're going to pave some of their parking lots, but some of the potholes in the spring need some touching up, so we'll take our cold patch over and help them out with that. The city provides two school resource officers, full-time, one split between the middle schools and one at the high school. And then we also have some patrol officers that assist with the DARE program. And the IT services, we have Darren Zaramba, sergeant for our PD, who- And the IT services, we have Darren Zaromba Sergeant for our PD, who handles most of our operations, as well as a desktop person who handles the printers and minor problems with the desktops. But then if we need somebody more from an engineering standpoint, or a server programming standpoint, the IT provider for Medina City Schools provides that for us, again, at no cost, through this collaborative relationship. And both of us share, or save money, save taxpayers' dollars, money, from having a shared civil service office and a Medina TV office, that we both share and collaborate. And the public benefits from that. A best hometown supports its veterans, and their, as well as active military and their families. Here in the community, in February, we have the four chaplain service that I mentioned a short time ago. In May, they have an Armed Forces Day celebration on our public square, that they partner with one of the farmers markets. In May, they have an annual Memorial Day parade in program, where the parade starts on the square, goes out Liberty Street to the Spring Grove Cemetery, and then there's a ceremony there. In June, there's an oath of office ceremony on the square for the new Army enlistees, where I talk to both the enlistees and their families, and administer the oath of office for them. And then in November, I did not include it on this slide, but in November, we have a Veterans Day concert, where the Medina Community Band provides a concert at the St. Francis Church. And how that started was on September 1st, 2001, I'm sorry, September 11th, 2001, when the Twin Towers were hit, and our country was badly shaken and rattled with that terrorist attack. I was approached that fall by Marcus Nyman from the Medina Community Band, and he said, "We need to do something to pull the community together, to have a reason to get together in unity, to celebrate our care for one another." And that was the first, in 2001, November of 2001, that was the first Veterans Day concert, and we've done them ever since.
I think one of the key aspects of the vibrancy of any city is its citizenship. And I think the veteran community of any city has a lot to do with that. And Medina is just wonderful, in terms of how it treats its veterans, and how the veterans support the city in a lot of activities. And so it's a nice marriage that we have here, and it's been that way for many, many years. We're reaching out in a number of ways, to increase the understanding of all of our citizens, particularly our students, of the value of the service of veterans, and what that means to their freedom today. And when they understand that, then they understand why they have the freedom to do what they can do. And the veterans are a big part of that. And we have a great relationship with the city, and we're just going to improve that relationship through the coming years. And it's important that we do that for our children, and our children's children, so that they all understand the value of veterans in their community, and the fact that freedom
Look at the front of that airplane there, it says Pride of Medina, Ohio. And those two folks kneeling in front of it there, the pilot of that airplane was Joe Zarni, he was of Medina, Joe Zarni of Medina, and he was the brother of Elmer Zarni. I know a number of you knew Elmer. And the Pride of Medina was the airplane that flew General Patton in World War II throughout Europe, by a Medina pilot. Best hometown goes above and beyond, I'm going to give you a number of examples of that. My page flipping is not keeping up with my notes. So here are some examples of a best hometown going above and beyond. On December 18th, I'm sorry, on December 2018, a fire duty officer responded to a home in Montville. Their fire detectors were malfunctioning, so they disconnected them and suggested replacements. When they got the replacements, they told them, "If you call us," this was a fire duty officer, "if you call us, we'll send the fire crew out and help you install them." So the crew came back a week later, they installed the new units, and while a number of the crew members were inside doing that, they didn't need all of them inside, so one of the members stayed outside and shoveled the snow from their driveway on their walks. On December of 2018, a local business owner came into the finance window, and asked for a number of the names on the shut-off list for water, that were going to have their water shut off. And I found out that she does this each December, she comes in and pays off a number of those outstanding bills. In January of 2019, Nino is our service director, directed his service crews to watch for trash on the roadways, and the right of way, to try to help keep our town up kept, like we all strive for. January 11th of 2019, we had an elderly woman, that I found out after she got up here, had walked from Highland Drive, we were having meetings with Rita here down in the rotunda, and she met with Rita here at City Hall. It was 27 degrees outside, and she had planned to walk back home. So I asked around City Hall, and found one of the employees was getting ready to run out on an errand, and agreed to drop her off back at her residence on her way to the errand. On Saturday, January 12th, I was heading to my parents' house on North Jefferson Street, and I noticed that a large tree had fallen behind Giant Eagle, and was blocking the sidewalk totally. So when I got to my parents, I sent an email to the building department, to ask them to get ahold of Giant Eagle then, the following week. What just so happened, that Dan Glatter stopped in that Saturday, saw the email, rounded up a chainsaw, and went up that Saturday, and cut the tree up in manageable pieces, stacked it in the Giant Eagle lot, and then went in and told them what had happened, what he did with it, and where their wood was now. On January 23rd, an elderly female resident was struggling, trying to pull her garbage cans back up her driveway, because of the heavy snow. One of our snowplow drivers happened to be driving down the street, observed this, stopped the snowplow, moved the garbage cans for her, and then assisted her back into the house. On March 8th, 2019, a local business with high water read, our water department contacted them, they looked around, and couldn't find anything leaking. So our water department actually went out to the house and searched with them, and found a shut-off valve in an unused crawl space, that the people weren't using at all, had been leaking pretty badly, and was the cause of the high water read. And then last but not least, on June 5th of this year, a resident in the 900 block of Lawrence Street called, because the storm water was gathering in the roadway. And he said, literally, within minutes, the streets crew was there, and cleaned off the storm grates, that had the seeds and whirly birds from some of the trees that we have in our tree lawns. And they cleared a number of the storm drains that day, but then what was more impressive to him, was that they came back the very next day, and in his block, and in each block, north and south of him, they swept the entire street of the seeds, they pulled every storm grate out, and vacuumed all the seeds that were down in there, to avoid this happening again. And the resident told me, that's why they live in Medina. And I just want you all to know how proud I am of our team, day in and day out. These are just a handful of examples of what we see.
I was walking the streets with her, this street, and this was in March. And I was crossing the street, and you know, with the winter, grounds are like, cement is like raised, and, well, I tripped and fell and got hurt. And what did we do? Yeah, with the hand. And we called the city, and boy, they took care of it right away. There was no, you know, they really cared. And they did the streets for us, so that we don't trip on them. I should have been watching, yeah, but, you know, I'm busy talking, and then next thing I know, I went down. Yeah, they cared, and they took care of it. That's how we met Nino, wasn't it?
Mm-hmm. He called the next day. My husband's hand got swollen, but nothing was broken. And I did call City Hall, just to kind of report it, simply because I did not want children riding their bicycles to also trip and hurt themselves.
Or older.
Or older, older people, or anyone, for that matter. And so, the same day, probably within the hours, they came and they got it fixed, and my husband did go see his doctor. It was just swollen pretty big, but no broken bones or anything like that. But the next day, Nino called. And I thought, wow. A City Hall worker.
That's new to us in all the cities we lived in, that the city would actually get in touch with you.
Wow, that's interesting. He wanted to really know how my husband was doing. And when we walked in City Hall, to pay our bills, everyone there, not only Nino, but everyone there, is so friendly. I love them all, I love them. They're just there, always ready to help. And it's not only us, I believe it's everyone, everyone.
So you've heard me talk, and give you examples of what makes a best hometown, but we also ask some other people, what their idea of a best hometown is.
It's just a real blessing every day to wake up, and get out in the community, and enjoy all that's, I've seen come about, and is here now, to stay and get better every year for our next generation.
They're just there, always ready to help. And it's not only us, I believe it's everyone, everyone.
Can't say enough about Medina, that is, for me and my wife, a super fantastic place to live. Wouldn't trade this for anything in the world.
And I want to give Medina, the city of Medina, a pat on the back, too, because I've done some work in other cities, as I've mentioned. And to be honest, nobody compares to Medina. You do it right, and you do it well.
We're very happy here, and this is where we're going to remain.
Medina is a great place to live.
Best hometown is here.
Oh, good job. Oh, that was a nice one. Good job.
And in closing, that's exactly right. The best hometown is because of everybody here, all of our businesses, all of our residents, everybody that makes Medina what it is. And on behalf of the council and the city, we couldn't be more pleased and willing to serve you, day in and day out. If there are questions, I'll answer them. I don't imagine council has any questions, but if the public has any questions. Okay, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, we'll wait till 7:30 to start the council meeting.